It is open.
Yep.
All right, are we being recorded? Multiple. All right. What's one of them? You spelled bicentennial, B I C.
Yeah.
A and two Ns?
Marvel.
Try one. Okay, um, it is open, we're being recorded. I would make a motion to, um, approve the meeting minutes of February twenty eighth as amended. Joy, there was just one spot where it said, um, that we were looking at, um, talking about shared leash chief, it was supposed to say fire. Oh, that was it? Um. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on favor?
Hi.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of March fourth, eleventh, and executive session minutes from March eleven. There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Well, on favor?
Hi.
I have to abstain because I was absent for one of them. I'll bet you. Audience participation? Come on down, George. Before you start talking, I'm going to tell you that the woman that we hired to do our gardening for Watson Park and bicentennial just emailed me yesterday and told me she's accepted a job offer in Tennessee. So we are putting that out to bid. So that is my answer for those questions that you're about to ask.
Well, may I, may I politely suggest that before she moved to Tennessee, for the amount of money you paid her, that she give you a written report of her findings and recommendations that she done?
She wasn't doing findings or recommendations, she was doing maintenance.
Oh, she didn't? I thought she was recommending what needed to be done with the parks.
No.
Oh, so, okay. So we're at that stage, then we're at the planning stage, back to the planning stage.
We're, we're at the stage where we need to put out a bid to hire someone to do maintenance.
As I recall, some time ago.
That was a long time ago.
There was a study of the parks and regulations of what planning should be applied in the parks to bring them back to the quote, old stage of plantings with flowers and bushes and so forth.
Done. Is that right, Mary? Yeah, that's all been done.
And so that exists, Mary?
I think it's been done, George. The stuff was.
I'm asking if it exists, that would be a starting point. They have that as something that whoever comes in to work on the parks looks at and says, yes, I can implement this, or no, I can't implement this.
I think it's already been implemented. We're just looking for maintenance.
Josh took care of that one.
Yeah.
And a lot of the stuff that has been done, has been done.
Yeah, so we're just looking.
Some of it.
So that, that plan exists, so you can.
And I don't know where it is.
Somewhere.
So that needs to be located there.
Why?
Well, because whoever's maintaining the park should be working from that plan. And not knowing what plants are there, so that they can provide the proper.
Partner, they're gonna know what plants they're looking at, right?
Well, if you, if you spent the money to put in the right plants, then you should be maintaining them, the plants that have been installed. If you do a plan, you should follow the plan. So if there is a plan and it has been partially implemented, then that plan should be carried forward and whoever you hire should look at that plan and say, yes, I can implement this. I can know what fertilizers these plants use. I know what this tree needs. I know what this needs and be able to follow through with that plan, rather than just go off into left field with no plan and destroy possibly some of the money that has been spent for appropriate plantings in the parks.
Sure.
Right? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So the important.
What you got next?
So the important thing is to find that plan.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see if we can find it and we'll talk about that later. Now, the other issue I have is the resilient dirt road project that was begun a year ago.
Dave, you come on down for this one? I know you do. He reported on it last week.
Okay, I I didn't hear that report and I'm sorry.
Why would you? When did you get?
Well, I watched the video, but I didn't catch you on that side of.
Oh.
As I understood, a year ago, there was a, there was a public hearing which I attended at the COA and the people from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission were supposed to come back and interview people who lived on dirt roads in town and especially those places that were close to beaver dams or beaver ponds. As far as I know, none of that has taken place. And it was supposed to be another public hearing this spring to talk about this held by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So I'm asking, where does it stand at this point?
As of right now, they've, they've been out and evaluated all the beery areas already.
Okay.
So, um, right now we're waiting for the overall package to be sent to us. Um, they've been working on the NOI for a color replacement. All that also.
Yeah.
Um, that's just about done. It's been sent to DEP.
Now, this is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, okay?
It's the MVP. MVP, yes, the real world is.
Now, when is there going to be that public hearing that is supposed to be held this spring?
I have no idea yet.
Okay, but there is one gonna happen.
As long as I know, they do. It will happen. I can't tell you when because spring just got here.
Is, is it Pioneer Valley that's putting up the, uh, conversation on the beaver?
Yes.
Situation?
Yes.
Okay, so we're waiting on that.
Of that, yeah, along with the NOI and everything else.
Okay, good. Uh, my other question was, there was, I believe, and I'm not clear on it, a building assessment that was done few months back to see what needed to be done in this building and in the post office?
I don't think it ever happened.
It never happened.
Yeah, we were talking about, uh, that was right around when Christopher was leaving, about hiring someone, um, to come in and do an assessment of all the buildings. Um, and then I think you had asked if we, you could use local people and local people said that they were not um, available or, um, equipped or interested in doing that. So that's where it left off, um, and then Christopher left and we haven't touched it.
Okay, what are your plans now?
I don't have any plans with that. As of right now, we are just introducing a new town administrator and not overwhelming him is my plan.
All right.
As far as building assessment, we, mine did do an assessment of the building and we've actually gotten, we discussed the report at that, uh, meeting. So we do know some of the issues.
There was talk, um, of doing an assessment of all of the buildings in town and just getting an idea of, um, I think part of, partially for our capital plan, what we wanted to sort of build into it. But we sort of put that on hold. It was just a discussion and I don't think it ever went any further than that.
Is the ADA assessment?
That's been done.
For that?
Yeah.
And I mean, that's gonna be part of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's on the website.
Okay, I, I'm also concerned about the maintenance of the post office building and, you know, the sprinkler system here and all the other kind of things that are.
Those are things that are IR'd, are the RV.
Need to be done, okay. Is there a possibility that several of us might get together and begin some work on bicentennial park, i.e. cleaning the bricks and things like that?
There's, just had an ice storm and snow yesterday. You're killing me. It barely.
It's spring. The cherry blossoms are out, they're, they're probably.
All right.
Washington DC, I saw.
We're not watching.
I, I saw this morning at seven o'clock, they're beautiful.
This your first week here or what?
Once, listen, once we go.
The trees on North Plantford Road as I drove in.
Yeah, once we, once it's spring, George, and we are, yeah, but.
But can we plan and get things underway?
It'll get done. It gets done every year. It'll get. Who's in charge? You're in charge?
No, I mean, did we have a central person that takes responsibility for taking that?
Kristen, Kristen, no.
No.
Who you've been hiring from, Kristen?
Why don't you, uh?
Well, I've.
Now, wait a minute, you come in with all these ideas.
I did, and I am willing to participate.
So I think it's only fair that while you're coming up with all these ideas for somebody else to do, stepped in a play.
I have already talked to Jeff and I had, uh, talked the other week.
Jeff had volunteered to break the leaves and clean down all.
Right, and I volunteered to work with Jeff to steam the brick work up there because Jeff quietly acknowledged that he had the equipment to do it and I said I didn't want to play the work. So there's two of us willing to do that.
So now you have to.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure we are.
June thirty seventh.
That sounds good. Um, we, I just heard yesterday that we have to put the project back out to bid.
The whole project?
The, the maintenance of bicentennial and the maintenance of Watson Park are going out to bid because we don't have.
You're gonna include the cleaning of the bricks in that?
Yep.
Rather than have it done with volunteer help, all right.
I mean, unless you wanna do it.
Well, if Jeff.
You wanna, you wanna guarantee to do it every year, we'll draw up a contract.
I'm willing to volunteer to work with Jeff this year and do it.
You're volunteering Jeff?
I gotta wash my car that day.
Just.
Well, I'm throwing it out. I'm willing to work with Jeff because I know he has the equipment.
So I went to start my thing and it won't start, so I don't know. It was too cold to pull it over. I'm not strong enough anymore, so gotta wait till it warms up a little bit.
What else you got? Anything?
That's it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. All right.
Thank you for hearing.
Any other audience participation? Jennifer, you come with us?
Yeah, um, I'm that, um, the grant for so it was Southwick, it expires June of this year, so we're just renewing it, so we signed it a couple years ago. I just need, and we're also getting a, um, inspector of this one and anything else. You sign there and then she signs it. Southwick signs it in time. And then I'll, and I'll leave it in your logs. They're hoping that the contract will last twenty five years.
Thank you.
That would be nice.
What happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, will you just let no, Joanne know what that is for the minutes? Do you know what that is, Joanne?
Sure, I can, I'll just.
Okay.
You know what?
No, I don't know what it is.
I'll just scan it in and send it to you.
Okay. Um, all right, highway. Mark, do you wanna come down with highways? So that, I know you probably wanna leave, we can talk about that. I mean, I don't know what you could possibly have better to do than be here.
Give you a list.
All right, Dave, you wanna start?
Sure, um, give your over, it's all done.
Fantastic. Went well?
What, what road did you?
Culver.
Gibbs?
Gibbs. Yeah, all finished. Actually, it's finished Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, raised the road, that area there, probably about a foot and a half maybe, maybe a little less, but looks good.
Nice.
Looks real good.
And that's the one that was all paid for?
Correct, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, after, since two thousand and eighteen.
I was gonna say, it's been a while.
If they're working.
For Culver.
Yeah, what's that?
Is it working?
I was out there the other day, it was.
I'm good.
But I think it's the first time I've seen no water on the other side, I didn't know how long.
Which culver?
The one by Fontaine Farm? Bottom Hill? Yep, yeah, it's, sorry. Um, I have Kai and Bond coming over tomorrow.
Okay.
To look at
Oh, good.
The water place over there on Western Stage for the bridge. Um, no major incidents this weekend. The, uh, the crew did an awesome job out there.
Yeah, they did.
Um, not a whole, not a whole lot of power outages, but there's, you know, quite trees, branches, and all that. Um, Tree Company will be in town on Gore Road tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, those ones will be shut down.
Tree Co, Tree Company?
I'm not sure.
Is this through Eversource?
Um, I believe so. They could be either northern or.
It's not a town paid situation, okay.
No. Um, we're gonna, they're gonna close the whole road down for three days. Um, they said they're gonna have a crane down there, get some trees out, so I'm gonna beat them tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And find out what they're doing.
All right.
Um, the other crew, I believe, is northern on North Blas, they're doing some tree removal here and there. I do have a cutting list, or I have to say map from Eversource. It's like thirty pages long.
Okay.
Um, but choosing the area, actually the roads, they're gonna be recut. So.
Okay.
It's gonna be good. Um, the Mack truck is back, Mack truck is left. Took me to Mack, to Swax, uh, the other day to evaluate the, uh, flower, the flower head on the, on the truck.
Okay.
So that is all that I have for now.
So trees down, Mark, thank you, we, thank you, Dave, um, any other areas in town that we think we need town tree cleanup or besides Watson Park? Any other?
Another guy, we're out there, uh, this morning doing some, um, tree cleanup here and there.
Okay.
Down on, um, on Chester Road for now. And what I've seen driving around there, there really isn't a whole lot.
Okay.
You know, minor branches here or there.
What do you think about the park? Do you think we'll have to call someone to do that or?
I, I don't know if, I mean, it's a separate entity altogether, right?
Yeah, it's.
Because I think we've run into it before where we couldn't use highway money or tree warden money.
It's gotta come out of the, right?
Uh, branches that fell on this side, we can use town money. Branches that fell on the other side, that's.
Drag it over.
Trust, yeah, yeah.
Dragged a whole bunch over to this side. Um, I took a ride through, there was one branch that was blocking the road, I cut that up, threw it out of the way. Um, looking at it, there's maybe a day, day and a half's worth of work in there.
Okay.
Um, I've got a couple of options depending on how you wanna go. I've got my regular tree guy or I've got another guy because everything's already on the ground. It doesn't require a bucket truck.
Oh, okay.
It'd just be.
If that was, yeah.
It's gonna save you about five hundred bucks a day.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, let's do that then. Um, just before spring, I guess, before we start to get it gardener.
So I, I, I wanna get right on this one.
Yeah.
Um, just because it's public, people are in and out of there all the time.
Okay.
You know, I really don't wanna see somebody tripping over big limbs and whatnot. But at least the road is passable all the way through like this afternoon.
If you, if you're brave enough to drive on it.
In four wheel drive.
Um, will you let Doug Emo know that we're taking care of the trees? Because I saw him out there today trying to pick up trees. We know. We don't want to, no one wants to ducky with a chainsaw.
Or a can of gas.
Please, no. He's never gonna live that down.
How many you can actually remember that?
He won't.
I, I don't think I was eating in town. I don't think so.
They shook my garage door.
He said he flew like a hundred feet or something.
Put ten or like ten gallons of gas and throw a match in it. If he puts some around it.
Oh, man, all right, um, Dave, while you have Mark here, do you have any other, uh, tree things you wanted to run by him? Any roads or projects you were planning that you needed?
He doesn't have enough money. I don't have enough money and the town don't have enough money.
If you were thinking next year though, what would you wanna plan?
There's so much out there, it changes, it, it, it changes after every storm, you know, so. Um.
I guess I just wanna know like your priorities so that we're like blending.
I mean, pretty much what I use my budget for is anything that I feel is a hazard, be it dying, dead. And then obviously the ash trees are all going quicker than we can cut them.
Yeah.
Eversource has stepped up here this year or so and done a ton of removals, which is helping.
Yeah.
Um, but there's still a lot of places that there's ash trees right along the road.
Okay.
Um, I would suggest instead of tying up the meeting, maybe Dave and I get together.
That would be fantastic, yeah.
Plan together, maybe as, you know, two departments, kinda going at it next year to get problem areas.
Okay.
Figure it out. Since, since we brought that up, I'll bring it up later. But, um, I know Mark has the same problem as I do, um, is the funding, okay? Um, for me, twenty thousand dollars will only last seven days. The other portion of that goes to the police detail. Um. And that's a big headache with a lot of these. Yes. Major roads, Russell Stage, North Plantford, Chester's.
Beach Hill.
Beach Hill. You got, you gotta have two police officers on it. If a police officer sees us, they throw us right off the road. I can try and do it without a detail, but. Yeah. They get angry.
Yeah.
Um, then they don't take the detail and it ends up being the sheriff's department, so.
Yeah, and then you're spending more.
Yeah, but, um, my, my, my thought is, um, is that maybe this year coming up, we could have a, a line number on the, um, warrant or whatever for me to say twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And that is just used for, um, police details. Plain and simple, that's all it does for, so that we can use our money instead of using it for seven days, we can do fourteen days or whatever. If, if we. It would extend both our budgets. Yes. Doing that, plus it would benefit the water.
I guess we, I, that's, that's an interesting point. We'd have to look at, um, how much we've spent in police detail in past years to see what we need to put in there all around. I think accounting can probably do that for us, pull up.
Well, one way Tallon, uh, saved money, my father's police chief over there, what he ended up doing to save money on traffic control. Uh, when people retire out of the police force, they can't patrol, but they can still sign up for traffic duty.
Mm-hmm.
And what he did is that he also hired, uh, people out of the town to do junk traffic jobs where they get paid a lower rate than a, a cop getting overtime pay. They get a, a flat rate where it, it falls underneath the police chief, but it's a separate entity of, uh, traffic control where they have the cruisers that can do it, but they can do, uh, work for these guys in the traffic.
What, what are they paying these gentlemen an hour?
I don't know the exact rate. I can find that out.
Because I know most of them are fifty-five dollars an hour.
I don't, I don't know what their rate is. I just know that it's cheaper for the town to hire them than it would be to hiring their, uh, police department.
The other option would be looking at a company that specifically does certified flagging.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what they get per hour. I've never used them. They're, they're, they're union, I believe. But I believe they're gonna be a little bit better than the police.
I think it's like thirty bucks an hour.
Thirty-four, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't think they're that much.
No, they might not even be, but.
But it might be worth looking into.
So that's.
I can certainly. Fifteen, twenty thousand dollar contract with a company specifically for.
Yeah, police details.
Police, they're, they're, they're flagging, so.
Yeah.
Could you do some research on that, Mike?
You can do that, um, just a, just a warning, I'm gonna look into it, but, uh, since we rely on hard time police, that is a good part of their income and that's a.
The blanker, please, yeah.
Yeah, that would tend to dissuade them from staying with the department if that's, uh.
Yeah.
Be cutting their incomes significantly.
Okay.
Because we do that for those rolling on a regular basis.
From, from what I understand, though, talking with the chief of police, uh, it's kinda hard to get people for details to, uh.
I've never had.
Do that, so that would be an alternative that.
I'll certainly look into it.
Okay. Maybe even if we can find a balance between the two to try to save some money and give them some hours. Um, maybe have a conversation with the chief.
Well, for having a lease, but.
Yeah.
You know, if the town can save some money.
Yeah.
Absolutely, you know, and I'll see what the rates are and, and what the differential is.
Okay.
So Tom, uh, I just heard back, Tom's paying their traffic control fifty to fifty-five dollars an hour.
It's worth it.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and well, the, last meeting we had here, um, they were talking about abandoned houses in town.
Yeah.
Um, I know the town of Beckett has a line number also designated just for abandoned houses to be tore down.
Hmm.
And, and it's rotating, it just sits there until it's used and the next year it gets replenished. If it isn't used, it still sits there. And we can do the same thing with the, um, the detail, the police details, you know, if we use a portion of it and say you reuse ten thousand dollars, there's fifteen left in it, please add another ten to it the following year.
Just keep it at that, yeah. Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Okay, yeah, if you guys get together and then just let us know what your plan is.
Sure.
For next year. And you've already done budgets, right? Have you guys met with, yeah, you met with?
You might have.
You haven't yet.
Well, you're not giving anything, anything to tie to your budget. Oh, no, no, no.
Can you find some time to at least sit with me and I can talk to the finance company?
Absolutely.
All right.
All right.
Are you typically here nine to five?
Yeah. Okay, so for Brian, I'm, I'm, I leave it regionally, I'm right.
I'll reach out and try and set something up early, nine o'clock something, personally, I'm worried, if that works, if that's all right.
Right. At least good.
Uh, what, what about the forty-five hundred dollars for the work on Jethro Jones Road for the water department, those trees that he wanted to cut down because of the work on the skater project coming up?
Four C.
Four C, she said. Action item, approve water department, uh, ash tree removal. Did you see that, Mark?
That's why you see.
Oh, that's why you, I thought, oh.
That's fine.
I thought you were here because I sent you a text about the park.
You're too bad.
No. All right, um, so this is the, he, how much is it? Who doesn't say account number?
Which one? The one that's four hundred, I believe. We talked about the one of forty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking for the paper. Is it in here, Joanne?
It's not in there.
And the, what we're voting on, the action item, do I need to vote, um, sign anything or no?
Gordon came in and said, I wanna use this ash tree. We've gotta get rid of the ash.
Oh, that's right, we told him, we put it on the meeting next week.
So I'll put it on you.
Thank you.
And that's all I know about it.
Thank you. What do you got?
Any of you guys been out there? There's a moon ash tree, Mark. I don't think there's even an ash tree on that road.
You know, only thing he's talking about is probably all the overhanging that's coming into the road.
Yeah, I, I went out and took a five minute video driving down the road today, if you guys wanna watch it.
So there's no ash trees?
I have absolutely no problem driving, driving, because I saw a fifty-three foot box, I landed all the way out there.
Okay.
There was one branch in the road from the ice storm, I cut out and threw it out.
And plus there's one that's leaning out toward the road and deeper in the woods there.
There's a couple of little things that are kinda hanging out there.
There, there was one good sized one that, that was, I, because when he started to complain, took it right out there too. I chased David around and and anyways, uh, when I took it right out there, there was, there was a couple of brush that, you know, but other than that, there was just this one tree, you know, I think it was maybe about two hundred yards before you get to the plant.
Okay.
On the left-hand side coming in and it, and it's, there's a big tree that it's next to, and if it falls, that bigger tree's gonna push it to the road.
Okay.
But I don't know if it's an ash removal.
So based on my survey through there this afternoon, I only see about a day's worth of work. Um, my normal tree guy is twenty-four hundred dollars a day. My other guy is two grand a day. Guy was just a chipper and obviously all chainsaws and.
Yeah.
Dump trucks and whatnot. Either one of them could go through there in a day and cut what's marked.
Okay, um, but we can't take it out of the ash, we would have to take it out of.
I can take, well, here's my other bone of contention. Um, there's a gate at the end of that road. While it was wide open this afternoon, nobody was there. Typically, it's closed. The only people that go in and out of there are the water department. I understand that it's technically still a town road. So I guess I'd be looking for guidance from you as to whether you guys feel that. Town tree ward and money should be spent on something that only the water department has access to.
Is, are the trees that are marked, are they like a high priority? Is it something that we're really concerned about?
They're, for the most part, other than what TJ was explaining, they're all about this big, they're all saplings and there's. There's nothing over.
Right, cause I would say that, I mean, emergency wise, we need to be able to, we're, we need to have access to the water department.
Sure.
But I don't think that if it's not a top priority.
I don't think it's an emergency, I mean, if you just had an ice storm and there was one branch in the road.
Well, he was telling us that it needed to be cleaned to get equipment and to do repairs.
Box van coming in or straight.
I don't know what repair he was talking about, so I don't know, but. I figured they were taking a crane in there to lift something out. I have no, I've never been in there personally, so I don't know.
I've driven a hundred ton crane in there.
Well, if he, so what we'll do is we'll vote it, we'll vote it tonight. Or do we even have to vote it? Can we just leave it?
I mean, if you, if you guys make the decision.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have my guy do the park. He could go out there afterwards, spend a day and get some of it done. I mean, I'm not opposed to any of it, but just I strongly feel that.
Is it wide enough to get in through here, Mark?
Do you wanna see the video?
I'll, I'll see it after, I don't wanna tie it to meeting, but yeah, I, you're, I'm trusting your word, cause I trust.
I mean, I took my F five fifty service truck over there that's nine and a half feet tall at a rack.
Yes. Well, the, the whole, you know, from tree line to tree line, that's gotta be thirty feet, if not.
For the most part, you're, you're a good ten feet off the road with everything.
Really?
Yeah. When they did all the damn improvements way back when and put the plant in, that, that road's all covered wide open. I mean, it is, it, it is starting to encroach.
Of course.
But.
Like, when I drove out there, nothing, uh, what a good brush hog could take care of on both sides to the road.
Even, I don't know if you are still in the western, I know they stopped the western Astro, but I don't know if you still get a tractor, but.
No.
I mean, a tractor mounted brush hog.
Yeah.
Do the same thing.
Okay.
Or, I mean, the water department has an employee that kinda does maintenance stuff to even.
Yeah.
I, I don't see anything there that he couldn't handle cutting down. If he could maybe use the, the chipper.
Yeah, now, excuse me, but did, uh, did they mark any of the trees out there?
Yep.
No, they already did. Okay, so you know what they're like, you know?
Alright, so, um, I would say let's just motion to table that until, uh, then if the water department wants to revisit it. So second?
Second.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so yeah, we won't. Thank you.
Yeah. And Dave, before you go, I have a quick question. Uh, on Blair Road. After you go past the cemetery going up toward twenty three.
Yep.
You go by Hall's property and then you got that hill that goes up and around and that.
Yep.
Uh, that's pretty damn near one car road now. Is there anything we can do with that?
I don't have enough money.
Well, I know. If I can break that a little bit better.
What, make it lower or?
Well. I don't know.
You say that it's not wide enough, but that road's been that way for.
Yeah, I know. I know.
I would have to take both things out, you know, at least another, what, ten, ten feet on each side.
Yeah.
Bring a whole bunch of material in, then I gotta re-put my, my janitors dishes in.
And that, I don't know, it just seems like it's getting, every year it gets more dangerous.
You wear glasses yet?
Nah.
You wear glasses?
I don't need, I had cataracts or.
Good, good. Don't touch it.
You youngsters, be quiet.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, a little you hang on for a bit. For, since we're gonna be talking about the pavement management study, you were at that meeting. Uh, did you wanna take the clerk first or?
Sure.
Sure. The town clerk.
Yes.
Will go to see.
I give you all paperwork. This is something that we would really like to purchase and we'd like to have your support in taking it to the finance committee. It is called an image cast precinct tube tabulator. It will count the votes. It will eliminate hours upon hours of work and down the road is going to help cut. The cost of our elections. Um, it's. Lightweight and versatile. It'll read the ballots. There's a picture of it with its specifications. There is a quote from LHS.
So.
Four hundred of these currently in use throughout the Commonwealth and there are. Just thirty seven or eight that have just been upgraded from a prior to this brand new machine. Uh, Russell just got theirs, um.
I could have one.
And Beckett has one too.
They all have one.
August has one and it's, it's a. It's a safety issue also, um. It'll, it'll be secure.
I think it'll be more, the ac, yeah, the accuracy in this, um, compared to what we're losing now. I mean, this past election, the ballot box was just. Got stuck way too many times.
Are we talking about our?
Yep, this will replace the cracker. Unfortunately, it is sad, it is, it is sad, cause I think it's a cute little box.
It is. But.
Yeah, we can put that in a historical society.
Yeah, right.
But this is just, you know, I think it's a si, it is a safety issue, it's gonna save on your, um, budget costs. But I think it's really important that we get this ordered in now, but they'll bill us after. Um, after Ju- July first, so we can talk with the finance and I'm sure. But, um, we would really like to use it for September and November, but we need to get the order in ASAP so that we're. In the line to get the equipment. And then there's the training, so it's just.
Does it eliminate the need for people counting on elections that we're saying?
Eliminate the need for as many people to work as full as we've had.
You'll still have your own privacy, you know, fill out your ballot and stick it in the.
It's really a simple process. Like what she says. Uh, you get a little cubby hole, you go in there, they give you a card.
Yeah.
You, you, you fill, you fill in little circles. Then you go over to the machine, you put it in.
Yes.
M cap.
Six thousand seven hundred.
I think it's well worth it.
Um, yeah, and you would have my support, um, to the finance.
I know they have trouble counting, so I think, I think we better six, five, seven.
Joanne and I are the best. They are. We are active all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Jennifer speaking is our election warden.
Yes.
She's a warden already.
Yes, uh, you would have my support anyways. I don't think you need an official vote from us, but when you go to finance.
We.
Yeah.
We'd like to have your support with the finance committee. It's really critical that we get in line to get this equipment.
Why didn't you order it?
Well, state this finance has to approve first.
What's your credit card?
Well, I don't, the finance is going to approve this first. I think that because we, uh, we're gonna go ahead and order this. And ask for forgiveness later.
Well, here's the problem though, is that it's not gonna be, the budget's not approved yet, so I don't know about the legality of ordering something before the.
We'll be over budget.
There you go. Nothing.
We can look at it that way, or we can basically say that their budget right now is forty five hundred for the election. Service part of it.
For the year.
So, yeah, for, for the year. So what you're really asking the finance department this year is that for an extra three thousand dollars. Because moving in to twenty five, cause they're not gonna bill you.
Yeah, I mean, fi, whether finance approves it or not, it's whether the town votes. So, yes, I, do you know what I'm saying? The town still has to approve the budget.
Yeah, but if we wait for a town meeting.
Well, may be it right.
I totally understand that. I'm just.
I could cover it for now and then do a.
Gotta go to town.
Still gotta go to town.
So you're just gonna be over budget like, you know, some of the other departments. So we'll have to come for transfer funds. Throw ourselves on the mercy of the finance committee.
I, I don't know.
Anyway, this is a critical piece of equipment. It's a critical need and we need to do it.
I'm, I'm just saying, if, I have an obligation to you, I want to be chief of turf and officer, I knowingly. Approve a large purchase that we don't have an appropriation for. If finance committee says, okay, that's fine, perhaps we can pay them back later. It's a, approve, uh, use of, I believe there's still about thirty two thousand in the, in their reserve fund. And.
Yeah, I think that would be the.
Promise to pay them back from either from next, well, not, not, that'll be too late, but we can find the money somewhere after. The last two months when we can do the transfers.
Yeah, I, I feel like that would be a better way to go.
I just would feel much more comfortable if we had identified money, people who suspended.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, so yeah, let's bring it to finance and just, when are you meeting with finance? Do you have?
We've already met with finance, we need.
I have to schedule.
Okay.
Back, but we wanted, you're, you're not meeting with the finance again for a couple of weeks.
Well, we have to have a special one.
Okay, so is it possible to meet with finance next week?
I can try.
I can get that going.
So.
Yeah, I'll Ja, I'll call Janet and.
Yeah, so just do, let's just do the meeting next week and.
Hi, what, what's the timeline on, on this? What, you know, like, once you order, how long are you waiting for delivery?
We will receive it after the first of the year, which will give us time for training.
Yeah.
We won't be able to use it, we can't use it for our, our local election.
Right, right.
But.
You're concerned.
Primary will give us an opportunity to troubleshoot anything that.
You said the first of the year, Mary.
Yeah, so that seems like plenty of time then. So a meeting next week is. Yeah, I, I agree, Mike, that I would rather have an idea where the funding is coming.
Yeah, if I could comment on the machine itself, I've been using one, one of these for years and they do work well. In fact, I'm gonna be using one tonight. And they do work well.
Okay.
But it will take some getting used to by the, uh, uh, the citizens, cause you do have to make the little round thing and. People's check marks.
Fill in that bubble, do not leave a blank space. We've been drilled into us from SAT.
Barking more than one thing. It, it, it's gonna take some education, not just of the poll workers, but of the citizens to get used to it. Uh, but as far as, you know, they hand it to you, you.
Shove it in.
Just get sucked into the machine and by the time you walk, locked out the door, it's already been counted.
So maybe, um, once it's all said and done and you've been trained and we can, um, put something out to the public, just let them know. It'll be different when they come to vote.
And, and well before the September primary.
Yeah.
We have to.
Okay.
But this is, um, it's going to assure our security for the elections moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
While, while we're here. I had submitted two requests for the agenda to be included on the agenda and I don't see them. One was to appoint, ask if you would consider John Carrington to serve on the Hilltown Ambulance. And the other was, uh, from the cultural council, would you please appoint Terry Carr?
Okay.
To be a member of the cultural council.
What is the term for that? Do you know, Mary?
Uh, cultural council is a five year term. Is it too late? I mean, is it so important that I can't wait till next week and I'll get it on the agenda? This is just getting messy. There's so many, it's getting messy.
It's feeling messy for you? Um, we can do the, um, Terry Carr, certainly next time. I just, I'm just thinking John is here.
Okay, yeah.
So then we can appoint John and he can swear in.
Supposed to be on the agenda, that's one point.
Alright, um, okay, so Mary, I'm just gonna wait and do that. Actually, let's just do that. I would make a motion to appoint, um. John Carrington as our representative for the Hun- Huntington, nope, Hilltown Ambulance Association.
Yes.
Second, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, um, alright, we'll go back to town administrator report.
Alright, um.
Mary, can you please tell me answer about the, about our, you know, other than that, I would imagine. For Terry, for Terry Carr.
Thank you.
Before I get into my, my list, I've got also the pavement management study meeting we had. Um, David and I met with a couple of members from PVB PC, uh, they have suggested that we redo. Our pavement management report, which was done, I think, four years ago, you said?
Yes, it was done with, I think, um, Josh was here and I think.
That was the grain they gave us, like they gave to be?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much they evaluate all the paved roads and so on and so forth.
Okay.
But they, uh, Dave suggested that that was done with the grant at that time.
Yeah. What did it cost now?
Six, sixteen thousand dollars approximately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the question is, do we want to spend chapter ninety funds on that? Or do we wanna just spend it on the road? Now, there's value to the report and it helps you to prioritize your own.
Yeah.
But, um, again, sixteen thousand, it could have been turned into asphalt.
Yeah, I know, and it was really valuable, valuable. I remember having that sort of grant.
If you get the most complaints for people, that's the road you fix.
Is there, um.
Not necessarily.
Are there any grant funds, um, can you do?
We, we looked at that already. The only thing I'll do right now is, is a one, the one stop. Uh, that's Luke's grant. We can, we, we, we go through that.
We can, I can certainly try for one.
Yeah, uh, the thing is, is, you know, um, the more, the more you apply for.
Yeah.
Is the more you're, you're putting yourself against it. So you put in one or two or three or four, you're competing against yourself.
Oh, in terms of grant.
Yes. I mean, granted, it's only a small grant. I mean, we probably have a, a great possibility, chance to get it.
Yeah.
At home.
But you're saying you don't wanna put another grant out there because of the big grant? You guys are working great, didn't you just?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
On the other hand, sometimes when there's a little bit of money that's sort of, um, extra. Though, fund a small.
A small project?
Project.
So we don't really, it's kinda like gambling, we don't really.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it, it's worth a shot, you know, but my feeling and the overall idea is that, you know. The first time they did it, it was probably more expensive, I would imagine. And now the template's all made.
Yeah.
And all they gotta do is go by and look at everything and then just.
Yeah.
Add to it. I think it's a little expensive.
Yeah.
You know, but.
Is it something we should put off for a year and talk about next?
I, I think, I think we can.
I mean. Then maybe, I don't know, we're always gonna be claiming grants. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think they're, they're right. Go for the big one.
So wait, wait a year and see.
Yeah, absolutely.
Table this for a year.
Okay, so let's just leave it.
You've been very aggressive about calling me on it. Get used to it. I think they want, I think they want funds because, you know, they said, well, we can break it down into four quarters and you can pay four thousand dollars at a time. You know, it's, it all, it's all gonna come from the same budget.
Well, do they have access to any grants?
No, I, I, I've thought about it. There's nothing else there right now. Uh, and this was brought up. Well, we, we can bring that up again after the fiscal year, because they usually get funding then also for certain things.
Okay.
So we can look forward after the new fiscal year.
Approach them and see if they have anything.
Yep.
Um, at that meeting, we also, I'll just add this on here, um. They, uh, mentioned the joint transportation committee meetings. And I'm gonna start attending those, I believe they're virtual now, they didn't use.
Really?
But, uh, I, I used to do that in the past.
Firdo, not Firdo?
No, it's through PVPC.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, you know, they, they do the transportation improvement plan at the, uh, Jalen's meetings. And I've found that you get a lot more, uh, if you're there at the meetings.
Okay.
You're a lot less likely to get your projects caught, so I'm gonna start attending those regularly and, and I used to get some good funding for Ludlow. When I'm back in the day.
Okay.
Almost twenty years ago.
Okay.
Anything else?
You're gonna wait a year for grant application to pursue the road study?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And not use chapter ninety funds.
I, I think I'm, maybe also. Uh, what else? Um, this, this past week, um. The tech, uh, I'm sorry, Selectman Cozino and myself met with Maya regarding the action plan for. Our property and liability. Um, we didn't do too bad, but we have some, I don't know if you wanna hear the mandatory. Requirements, uh, re- mandatory recommendations. Well, hell, that's what they call it, mandatory recommendations. They want this done. They want a facility maintenance and wat- water weather loss by mechanical failure prevention. Which would implement a formal written program that includes scheduled maintenance inspections. And prior, prioritization of corrective actions, repairs due to the level of risk for your buildings and hatches. This program should also include protocols, uh, to help property loss due to mechanical failures due to extreme weather. Uh, consider using a Maya grant, which I will look into.
Okay.
But, uh, that's one of the three, um, mandatory, uh, job hazard analysis. Um, should be performed for our high ha- hazard and or frequently conducted activities. And controls put in at the highest feasible levels using the hierarchy of controls. Uh, J, JHA's help can identify and control hazards and can be used to develop. Uh, DLS required personal protection equipment hazard analyses, standard operating procedures, training documents and operational budgets. Um, your risk manager, uh, will show you how to do this. I don't know that we, we also have a risk manager.
Okay.
I guess I'm the closest in the cap, so I'm gonna have to figure this out.
Okay.
And finally, they want an accident, incident and near miss investigation, uh, program in place. OSHA has, uh, uh, some templates that we can use for that, but they want all of these in the next three years.
Okay.
There's some other things they suggested, but, uh, I don't know if you wanna go into that now.
That's for the employees of the town? What is those three action plans for?
They're they're uh to protect the uh employees in high-risk positions, basically having uh. Protocols in place for preventing accidents and investigating them when they happen.
So it sounds like something you're gonna wanna meet with each chief and head of departments to design those plans?
Yes, the ones that actually, I mean, the town clerk's office probably doesn't have to be part of this plan. But uh certainly uh fire and and highway and water will be part of these ones.
Please, yeah.
Uh what else did we do with that? We also uh discussed, uh this is good, saving money. They they suggested ways we can. Uh increase our uh our rebates next year.
Okay.
Uh through the programs that they have. So it was a pretty good meeting.
Okay.
And we found some uh glaring errors in our, in our issues, like a a huge uh. A huge uh uh claim against the, our school department, which we don't have.
Oh.
It was actually not a school employee, but it was our employee.
Okay.
But we got that corrected.
Okay, good.
So that was uh, it was a good meeting at that.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
Mary, question?
Um just a a point, um Doris and I went to a security training program last week for elections specifically. And it was a four-hour-long program given by a separate organization. Contracted by the state, this former state trooper, now retired, does this. Really intense program on how to protect yourself, your workers, whatever else is going on during the course of an election. And um. We are in a high-risk situation, believe it or not. And this is what they projected and so they told us. And we signed up for a.
Yeah, that's true.
Security assessment.
Okay.
So the the state's gonna come out.
Okay.
And that's, you know, uh.
Just throw that out there.
Yeah.
It's great when the state gives these programs, but I get asked for programs all the time and then I look, oh, that sounds like a good program. And then it says, okay, one day program's eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
This was required by the Secretary of State.
So they they paid for it, didn't they?
So.
Or did they pay for it?
Paid for what?
Did they pay for the program?
Um they.
Did it charge us today? Okay.
Yeah, we didn't pay for it.
That scares the hell out of me.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, we're here from the government. We're here to help.
Uh I had a, uh I I attended virtually the meeting uh with Mass DOT over the. Uh travel plazas in town.
Yep.
Um apparently, uh once every twenty-five years, the leases expire.
Mm-hmm.
So they have uh extensive work planned.
Okay.
There, April and May, they're going to be building their issue, request for information uh to gather. As much as in- information as I can. And then late in the year, there's gonna be a uh re- uh request for proposals to actually do work there. So we can expect in the next year or two to see uh a lot of work at both of the plazas. Uh they were very nonspecific. Uh one of the administrators there asked the question, are these things gonna be shut down for any significant period of time? And they said, we hope not, but maybe.
Okay.
So they don't really know at this point. Uh but it's gonna be pretty extensive work, I think, and it may uh be uh significant outside work and and maybe a changeover vendors.
Wonder if it's a good time to build an exit.
I think it's a great time to build an exit, actually, and uh certainly uh this wasn't the meeting you put that forward to.
Yeah.
You know, if there was an interest, it would be the time to do it.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Mary?
We, in in the town clerk's office, we did have a records request for the purpose of moving forward with. The environmental assessment. They have to do an environmental assessment to see what the impact is going to be. And this is something that's required by NIPA, which is a federal agency.
For an impact on the renovating of the, oh, okay.
They they wanna, you know, how many bushes are there? How many trees? Where's the water coming from? Where does the water go?
Close to those on the westbound side. They're so close.
East and west.
There's wetlands.
Yep.
It always makes me so sad. If you ever get a chance to drive out there, it's so beautiful and it's so disgusting because McDonald's is right there and there's trash everywhere. But there's like so many birds and it's too young.
There was a.
I digress.
There was a PowerPoint and I requested it uh from the uh.
Oh, good.
And I will get that to you when, when they get it to me. I have gotta get.
Quick question. Are we owed money from the service areas?
I believe they have, uh one of the vendors there has a large water bill that needs to be resolved.
Two hundred thousand.
That's just DOT, yeah, in general.
Hundred thousand.
How much?
Almost two hundred thousand westbound.
McDonald's?
Yep.
Shut off their water, that's what I said.
He gets billed with DOT, not billed with McDonald's.
Shut down jug of their water, that's the problem.
Built now, it's built moving now, since ever. And you can't shut it off because they have one wa- water line, the shut-off is outside. It's one water line that goes in. So if you shut it off, or shut off, you shut everything off. So I mean, we're shutting off the side that pays.
Welcome.
And if you shut them off, then we fire department has to station there.
Yeah.
And cover and they.
Can we legally not?
That's why when they redo the the whole turnpike, they need to lay it down with the water department so they can make sure that they take.
So if, if they're coming to us with anything, now's the time to uphold that, I think, over their, you know, over their heads.
Yeah.
Try to get that paid.
I'm sure you guys are sending demand bills. Yes?
They can get sent all the time. They can kick back. But the thing is.
Where are they going to the wrong places, what I guess?
No, they're going to them. But the thing is, it, they they just leased the location. They're not the property owners. You can't lean the state, so. What are you gonna do? They, they're they're a, they're a huge portion of our budget every year.
Yeah.
Now, so if the state's the property owner.
Yep.
Alright. Have we notified the state that they're delinquent?
We have to get a a contact that deals with that. We we kind of put feelers out in the past to find out who it is. But now that they're doing this project, I think it's gonna give us a little more access to who's responsible.
Yeah.
Because I, coming from a real estate point of view, it's either gotta be in their lease agreement. I I've never heard of.
I never heard of the state paying.
Debt before, but.
The lease are usually paid for everything, water, gas.
They'll pay, they'll pay for, they'll pay for um water usage and stuff, plus the debt. I don't, I don't understand that. And that's the thing too, water debt, even though they tear that McDonald's down, their debt bill is still there. So they're gonna have to do something with the state. Because the state's now gonna be liable for that debt charge every quarter. I don't care if there's a a a portable, a porta toilet up there. The state is the property owner and they will still be responsible for that debt. That's why when we, when people go away for the winter, you're gonna bait their usage, but you cannot abate your debt.
So.
Yes.
So my question is, who do you send the bill to? You send it to McDonald's?
McDonald's.
Alright, you send it?
What? It's two different McDonald's, because one side is owned by McDonald's Corporation. The other side is owned by. Yeah, it's like a franchise.
Yeah, alright, so which side is the one that uh owes the money, westbound? Okay, so.
No, that's a franchisee.
So, so then what you're telling me is, is we have to tell the landowner, like we did on. Uh Route twenty-three here in the center of town, hey, they're delinquent, it's your responsibility.
Yeah, but the landowner is the state.
The thing is.
So that should be done, right?
And if they're, if they're gonna be tearing McDonald's down, we're gonna have, we're gonna definitely need to sit down with them because. They're gonna still be, you know.
You have to sit, what, you have to sit down with them anyway. So you're gonna have to tell the commissioners.
Yep.
That they have to have a sit-down with the state because their tenant is not paying its bills.
Yeah, yeah.
Um Mike, going forward.
Later.
Any other meetings? Will you just try to see if you can bring in water just so that the conversation is had?
Uh they said they wanna hear from uh, the whole point of this first meeting was to hear from. Uh the residents, the locals, from, I just, as they called it stakeholders.
Okay.
And certainly the water department is a stakeholder.
Okay. So yeah, so we've got two major things. One, they owe us a lot of money. And two, we want an exit. Maybe.
Yes.
Um, okay. What else do you have?
For water, also, uh we had a meeting um last week.
Mm-hmm.
It was a productive meeting and um decisions made that Gordon would uh go forward and and create a schedule and budget. And he's done that.
Okay.
So. If you're happy with that, it will, it's a draft. It may have some changes made and, but um. Based on that, as soon as is, there's one he's comfortable with, I'd like to uh send the letter and send this budget into uh the state to fulfill that.
And Chester is good with this budget?
Sent it to Don. He hasn't gotten back to me.
Okay.
Uh I'll be seeing him tomorrow at the fire meeting. So we'll discuss it probably before that. I'll go a little early so we can talk.
That budget is just to use up the grant funding too. That's not like all of our personnel budgets. That's, that's, that is through September fifteenth, use up the remainder of the grant funding.
So you're going to um take, you're gonna bill, I'm just trying to think from an accounting point of view. You're gonna um for payroll, you're gonna have, try to have payroll coming out of the grant fund? I'm just wondering, have you talked to accounting about that, how that's gonna work?
Well, Iris uh helped us to uh negotiate this uh Thursday afternoon when we had the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And it's up to uh, is it the, is it the chair of the water commissioner? That's going to sit down with Chester to make up a third schedule, or are you? You are, okay. So when do you plan on doing that?
They have to get back to Mike first to see that's even, that's gonna work for them.
Okay.
So if that works for them, then Bob is their chair. And if that works for them, we're gonna kind of stick on up. So that schedule kind of sits the same, same as a month.
Mm-hmm.
So we know what days we have, everybody. They know what days they have, everybody. That's like a fifty-fifty split.
So my question was though, that accounting-wise, how are we gonna take?
So what they said that, let me come up there.
Sure. Well, I'm just thinking, because I know what you can't, is my understanding of the budget is that you can't take like a payroll out of a um. Uh what's the other one?
The grant, the the grant is allocated for for payroll. So what what Iris and them suggested we do is. So we know what we have. So what they gotta do is, that's why they want us to use like, you know, so when I'm working on grant stuff. My time no longer comes out of my payroll budget, but it comes out of the grant.
Okay, so but I'm just saying, you know how you're gonna build that.
Yeah, so we do is we have two time sheets. So Steven's been doing it now for almost about a month and a half. He does two time sheets. So he does, when he works with us, he works, there's Blanford one, he gives us that.
Yep.
And what we're gonna do moving forward is that time sheet will come out of Blanford's. And then the one he writes down out of Chester's will come out of the grant. If I do any hours. My Blanford time will come out of Blanford. If I do any joint stuff between Chester and Blanford, it will come out of the grant.
Okay.
Same thing comes to, what they'll do is um, they're gonna have, Chester will have their Chester budget. And when their OIT comes to work for us, they'll pay him out of the grant. You know, it'll be the the same kind of thing. They said it's the, that's the easiest way to do it. It's, you know, because basically we're gonna send the bill. They're gonna do the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I just wanted to make sure you were tracking it on the year end.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We have, we have, we have, Karen keeps everything. We have double everything.
Okay.
We're keeping track of our side, what they do for their side.
Mm-hmm.
He told us what to do. They should be doing it. Whether they do or not, I can't speak for them.
Now, so when, when you hear from Chester now, or if they're not happy with what you have scheduled. You're you're gonna sit down and.
They're supposed to. They're supposed to market up what they wanna do.
Yeah, and then.
Send, get it back to 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 Mike and and we'll get it and kind of like.
Work it through.
Yeah, we work it out real quick.
Together.
The idea was to get it done this week, but realistically, we, I mean, it'll probably be the end of this week or beginning of next week.
Yeah, sooner than later.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, and the budget, you were there TJ, so the idea, what they, I I put the two options down.
Yeah.
Maybe if the, if the, if the summer intern thing works, and more help we got, and then with people going on vacation, we'll obviously have the coverage.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, we got plenty there, but and we're, I don't even think we're still gonna, I don't think we're gonna use it all up.
That's alright, we wanna use as much as we can.
Exactly.
You know, and put the rest in my pocket.
Don't say things like that.
Again.
You can't.
Cause I'm old.
You know.
You got all this pocket, you know that, it's fall out of losing.
My grandkids follow me around.
Alright, you got anything else for us, Mike?
Uh just uh we we have the meeting tomorrow in Chester for the, to explore uh shared services for fire. Possibly starting perhaps with the shared chief, but maybe progressing uh so that the meetings haven't been held and. Well, I guess this is a kickoff meeting then.
I forgot that's in Chester.
Yes, uh.
It's gonna be a little tricky for me, cause I gotta pick up my daughter here. I get her here at like five oh five, so I'll be late.
Alright, I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I just, I forgot that it was in Chester. It just throws my schedule.
It was, it was suggested that we have it there because it's a, you know, they have a fire department that can actually uh.
Yes, and I remember where their fire department is. Okay, yeah.
Don actually didn't know the.
Yeah, I know, I wanna go. If anyone else wants to pick up Violet, no, take her.
I'll let you pay.
Zero.
What are you?
She cooks. She's a fantastic cook.
Do you want Jess to do it personally? Cause she's gotta get Jethro all right, and I'm gonna be at that meeting.
Oh, yeah, maybe. But then, I don't know. Yeah, let's talk. I don't know how I would get her.
Well, she needs to talk to you anyway.
Okay.
She better.
I know the swing. I know.
Sorry, I found the address and he's, he started saying two hundred and look it up.
Yeah, it's right on, yeah, you can't miss it. It's right on the main street going into Huntington. Is that Route twenty?
Chester. He said it was on Route twenty.
Twenty, goes from Chester though into Huntington, yeah. You know what? Yeah.
And that's pretty much it, except Maya Health came today to uh do interviews and sign up with uh Public Works. And at this point, we need to have our minimum enrollment. Uh I'm not sure what the, what the uh results.
We need more town employees?
Yeah.
And this is to sign up for insur- insurance?
I've gotta, I've gotta get the details. She just was on her, on her way out and she said there are some issues with your minimum enrollment. I will look into that.
Okay.
Get back to you more on that. Uh it may give us some issues with some of the optional insurance.
Okay.
Uh we're not having enough people signing up for it. I don't think it's gonna cause any of the, for the main health plan.
Okay.
But if some of the optional things may be an issue.
Okay.
Uh and I'll find out more about it, but that was all I learned from that meeting. I wasn't in that meeting. It was a sign-up meeting. She was there for a while.
Um sorry, I was just looking for, I had gotten an email back from Christopher on something. I was looking for it. Um, do you know if you have a, um, do you have a building meeting scheduled yet?
Me?
Yes.
I don't.
Can you um look to please schedule uh building, um what is it? Was it, what do we call it? A building?
With the OPM.
With the OPM?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
Um just so that we can uh touch base where we're at. So that's um Jeff, Jeff, do you mind getting some of those on that? There's probably an email screen somewhere.
Not for me, but I.
Um, yes.
I'll get that scheduled.
Uh alright, let me see if I can find that email that I was looking for. I had asked, okay, so one of the things I reached out to um Christopher about was I remembered that we'd had a conversation. About someone um from town helping with the union stuff. And his response was that. Yeah, Kevin Green had talked about it and also Dave Hopson. So those might be, um, I'm thinking Dave Hopson would be a good person to include. Just because he's the super, he's the ex-supervisor from Gateway, so there's a lot of experience with that. Um so if you don't mind reaching out to Dave Hopson, he'd be interested in joining you with the union negotiations. Um and then the other thing was regarding the capital improvement plan. We were looking at who to contact for that. Did you still need that information, Mike?
Do.
Alright, he said.
I did start thinking of that, yeah.
The Collins Center uh put together the document. Said I was just at the stage of trying to get cost estimates for building assessment. So that's what we talked about earlier, because that is the key piece missing from it. Um and then he said EDM and Weston and Sampson were some of the firms that he had talked to about building assessments.
Did they say who they were talking to at Collins?
Um he did not. I'm gonna forward this to you.
I'll call Mary Cardine. If she's not, she can point to whoever it is.
Alright. Alright. There, I just sent that to you. Okay, um. We've got payroll warrant number eighteen, um. Here somewhere. This, now that's treasury.
Oh, by the way. Mike, did you follow up on that uh grant for the library? Patio thing?
Yes, uh.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Oh, that's.
That should be on.
Yeah, we just haven't.
I, I wanna discuss that a little bit before you sign it.
Do this first. Alright, motion to approve warrant number eighteen for payroll.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve uh warrant number nineteen payable for um payments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
They have a contract there, but I'd like to uh discuss it before you sign it.
Uh, I'll review that, and you trade me that, and I'll give you that. Okay, so I'll bring it up for discussion, um, I'm gonna say motion to approve the contract for more electric patio project pending um. Sorry, contingent upon the uh receiving the extension here, those are. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay.
Alright, um and we were hoping to get that today, the.
Yeah, it didn't come in yet?
No, um, so she said uh the, the program administrator. Doug did not have the authority to grant the extension that we requested.
Okay.
And it was requested by Christopher a long time ago, and it just not, wasn't acted on. Uh, but uh she's working on it now, she's gotta deal with with her superiors. Uh, she sent an email this afternoon or this morning that said it, we'd have it this afternoon or tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna just uh make the motion to sign a contingent on removing, on receiving that extension.
Yeah.
Uh, the contract itself been, has been reviewed and approved by uh town council.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, you know, we just wanna make sure we have the the money in place uh. Because it is an appropriation and we wanna make sure we have that much money available.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we would have to find a replacement for that fifteen thousand dollars. It is a minority of the money for the, for the patio of itself, I mean, most of the money is coming from various town funds. But uh, we're still counting on that to to get the total, it's required on that contract.
Okay. Um, yes, that was the, so my motion was um contingent on receiving the extension.
Right.
In addition to the grant funds, the libraries of state grant will be used to supplement.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is she that you keep referring to?
What is her name? Sharon Unusual, her last name is Melcoir. What's that?
Corso.
She starts with C, Cor something.
Okay.
And her last name is Melcoir, M E L C H O I R. Can't remember the first, Corvus, I think it was.
Corvus?
Corvus.
Okay.
You'll C O R V I S, was it? Something like that.
Her name is. As soon as it comes up. Corliss.
Corliss, I'm sorry.
That's her first name.
Okay. Alright, so that that'll work, all in favor? So that'll work, we did it contingent, so um.
Thank you.
It's all signed and.
Send it to the builder until, for power signature, until we, we know we've got that money in place.
Okay. Perfect. Um, and then I, I think we've got through everything on agenda, but then I have this here, the budget program revision for the community block, is this just something that needs?
Yeah, that came in today, um, you've already recall you sent the letter on the CD BG program. Uh, requesting a uh or endorsing the PVC's request for revisions to the timeline.
Yep.
That's the uh.
So you, oh, that was the email, you just need a signature.
That's all you need.
And I sign under authorized signature for grantee.
Yes.
Good, so the name and title's done. Sign all of them, I don't know. Why, there's so many.
I. I may have to just hand out to.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just, okay. Think buy a house. Alright. And then I have this letter from Pioneer Valley. Um. Correspondence with Amir. Who's the Kanani, I definitely butchered that name.
Amir was the uh, the person that came to see us regarding the uh pavement.
Okay, so we're not signing this. Got it, thank you.
Well, we're interested, but not.
Not just.
Not, not watching out to her.
Yeah. Alright, uh, I think that's it, yes, Joanne?
We have a couple things.
Okay.
Can, can we talk to Dave about the playground?
Oh, yeah, thank you for reminding me. Dave, playground, uh, we already used, we have some money in the budget this year to look at doing um. Redoing the mulch.
Yep.
Um, also maybe some of the plastic edging, so that the mulch doesn't just spill out everywhere, and then um, John, I know you're.
There's one of the swings underneath the swing, there's a concrete pier that it's only a matter of time before we get a call for somebody smacking ear, leg, or head off it.
So there's, yeah, so there's uh, we're concerned about injuries out there, but um, we need to talk to you because. We need to make sure we're budgeting to next year's budget, some way to fix the water from flowing through and.
I thought I told you last year about when, but John Hoppy and I looked at it.
Yep.
And he suggested that we could do a uh, a French drain in there.
Okay.
That um, where the sidewalk is.
Okay.
Just put a little catch basin right there and run the line out. And down, do two long sides off of it.
Okay.
But the biggest problem that we were looking at is how we're gonna run the wa- the um, the drain. Up that way when you get your whole sewer system over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the sewage line goes out that way and then goes up to the.
Right.
Edging field.
So if you're gonna come out like a, more like a square, come out and go across, you can't go out to the one that's out in the back with a stone, it's always got wash too far to run it. Okay, you think so?
Um. Do you, do we need to look at having like someone cut them in to look at?
I would.
Solving it?
Definitely do that.
So then that's something we need to budget.
A lot of that, when they put the addition on, there was a sidewalk and it had a big drain underneath it, and it used to run out there. When you put that on, they filled all that in. You had a problem.
So do we need to hire an engineer to look at that? Is that what it is? Cause that seems pricey.
I mean, no. Hire an engineer, this, this, this isn't the pricey part.
Okay. But we need a price so that we can budget it, um. Do I, do I ask John to to contact someone because he does the building, or do I ask you?
I could ask John, I can, I can do it, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna meet with an engineer tomorrow.
Okay, could you, would you mind? Yeah.
He's dealing with water also.
Okay. Thank you, if you wouldn't mind just asking him so we can get a price and then we can try to put something in the budget, but in the meantime. Um, if we can order the, the um. The stuff, Joanne, to recreation, and then we'll at least throw a couple bags on the part where John's talking about, so that we've got something to, for now, to cushion it, and then um. When we get edging and stuff in, we can look at doing a volunteer thing.
Dave, do you have a jackhammer?
Do I have a jackhammer?
Yeah, you don't have one.
Question, Gordon?
Yeah, what about that stuff, you know, it's that new most they, they, they basically just like, it's like one big piece.
Oh, I don't know, I haven't heard of that. We did the tire mulch last time. Yeah.
This is the, like the newer parks now, they don't have the mulch, it's basically they come.
Rubber mats.
Oh. It's, it's crazy expensive, I mean, we can look at, you're talking thousands of dollars for just that little area. Um, I mean, ideally, yeah, that'd be awesome, but. Really expensive. The cheapest thing to do is the wood.
Oh, oh, maybe it's that pier, do you know?
Oh, oh, this, I don't know, the cement.
It's sticking up probably good this far out of the ground, I don't know how far it goes down, I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't pull out a shovel and start digging. Next thing I know, I probably hit spring under there.
Also, your wife was also saying that the swings are really high, and I think that's because the mulch has gone down so much. So it's like kids can't count the swing.
I mean, I, I, not, I, I, no, I have a problem, I have a run and jump on it. And I'm a short guy, so uh, kids probably need a good old alley-oop to get up in it.
Yeah, yeah, so we gotta. Um, maybe also order some chain to um, and we might have to redo the swings. I don't know, we can, I mean, I don't think we're gonna raise it up that much, right? Like, we might need to.
How much does it cost to run a jackhammer?
We wanna use.
Then take, get rid of that here. Just check it up enough to get it down below ground level.
Is it?
Is it supporting the straight?
No, there's nothing in it, it's just right.
Uh, will you just run it through the window?
We'll, we'll run an extension for it on there.
Alright, that sounds like a happy job.
Yeah, it, it's like you said, if you dig it out and this jackhammer down and then put mulch over it, it'd probably be your best.
Yes, and then it's a done, done deal, right.
Um, Mike, do you wanna ask John happy about that?
Yeah, yes.
Russell Howard's department, my husband.
Yeah, he might, actually.
Do you have a compressor? You, yeah, we have a. No.
Okay.
They have a compressor, they have a compressor.
They borrow stuff from us, it's time for us to borrow stuff from them.
Joanne, what else you got for me?
Water bills. Can somebody please tell me what I'm supposed to be doing with water bills? I was told this is gonna be, go against their overhead, so don't pay them, that'll be in exchange back and forth, so I don't pay them.
When did, was that Christopher that told you?
Christopher.
No, I have passed your balance.
So Christopher, I know we had talked about not paying them because we were going to.
That's the last I heard.
We didn't wanna like cut a check back and forth, but I don't think we ever agreed on that.
Okay, well, we did get paid last time, so you want me to go forward and pay water?
I would say go forward and pay them, but we're not paying any demands, not happening.
No.
You can't.
Um, yeah.
Sarah already has a motion giving her permission to take uh interest in.
Okay, so let's just pay them so that there's a clear path that we, showing.
They don't need two McDonald's.
No.
And I have been working on revising the uh. Shared services costs.
Okay.
The water department has never been that happy with the way it was done.
Water department is never happy.
But.
What was that?
When all.
Nothing.
The way the shared services were calculated, but when all said and done, they may go off.
Be careful what you ask for.
My commissioner.
Yeah. Um, when we had the forensic auditor and and she took a look at them, she thought they were very fair. I don't know. We'll see.
Well, there were some things that weren't. Some things that didn't seem to belong in there, for example, the uh, assessors.